Member Agajanian?
Present.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Sinanian?
Here. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the February 12th, 2019 special public meeting of the City Council was posted on Friday, February 8th, 2019 on the Bulletin Board outside City Hall.
Can we have the next item, please?
Sure. One would be Director of Community Development regarding Downtown Glendale Association's DGA calendar year 2018 annual report and calendar year 2019 budget for the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District, one A motion accepting the DGA's calendar year 2018 annual report and calendar year 2019 budget.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sinanian and members of council. The Downtown Glendale Association, as you know, is a nonprofit that manages the Downtown Community Benefit District, which up until recently spanned the two blocks of Artsok Avenue and then eight blocks on Bran, generally from Colorado Boulevard to roughly the 134 freeway. This year, DGA completed its successful year as a property owner-based improvement district. What is unique about this year is, as you know, and DGA has been here more than usual this past year, is they successfully completed their efforts to expand the district to go north of the 134 freeway and to include more portions of Central. The item before you is a routine item. It's part of an administrative local ordinance and a requirement by the state to submit an annual budget and work plan to you that estimates the expenditures necessary to implement DGA's work plan. In the annual report provided, you will see that DGA continues to do the work toward achieving their main goals, which is to improve the downtown, attract new customers, increase sales, and increase occupancies. And with the greater district, we anticipate there is even more work to be done. Here to provide a recap of the efforts from this year and goals moving forward is Marco Lamandri. He's the Executive Director of the Downtown Glendale Association. Marco?
Thank you, and as always, we appreciate your ongoing support for Downtown Glendale Association. I think Jennifer carried or covered most of the development over the last year, trying to do a renewal and an expansion simultaneously took a lot of time and effort, but we believe that the downtown should not just be considered stopping at the 134. And so we were successful in working with the property owners to move it all the way up to Stocker. And when that occurred, we expanded the budget. As Jennifer had mentioned, we went from about $925,000 per year to about $1.4 million per year. But the percentages of the allocation of services stayed from a percentage basis pretty much the same. Eighty percent of the budget is allocated towards what we call sidewalk operations as well as district identity, and then about 16% for administration, 4% for what we call contingency. So I think that you can look at the annual report that was presented to you, but I think that the more interesting thing is where are we going now? Because we just initiated a 10-year district. The first one was seven years. The new initiatives this year will, we finally have hotels in the district we never did before. So we brought in the Hilton, the Embassy Suites, but as you know, we now have the Hyatt, which is right in the core of downtown. So one of my goals is to try to take those sectors and involve them more into the board. So there would be a hotel council that would give us feedback, because I would love to know who's staying here, for example, and they can do that through zip codes. And it's important from a visitor standpoint to get feedback from those hotels. We know there are thousands of apartments, and there are many more coming online, particularly on both sides of Central. So one thing I want to initiate too is an apartment council. And what do they think? What needs do they have? Because when you have those residents move in, you have their dogs move in. And so our need to take care of those things is going to be really important. There's a lot of things we don't have on the west side, which is trash cans, and I'll be working with the city to find out how we can get a good infrastructure of trash cans out there. And the offices, too. The offices are going through tremendous changes. What can we do to support them since they're members of this association, too? Some of the other things that we're looking at, and we discussed it, and I want to thank Jennifer for her leadership on this, as well as Nicole Diedrich and Helen McDonough, is we're doing the first annual International Women's Day on March 8th. And it's being done at CBRE. We believe that it's time that professional women show their leadership role all throughout the LA region, and the DGA is sponsoring that and promoting that. And we're not sure how the first year will turn out, but we think it can do nothing but really strengthen the image of downtown Glendale. Placemaking is extremely important, and you guys did a lot to promote that with the Artsok Paseo. Two years ago, you had really recommended that we do something with Maryland, and we did. And I think you'll see on the back of your annual report, Maryland has now been activated. But now with the Artsok Paseo, we believe that that's going to add a whole new dimension to placemaking, where people just don't go maybe to the Galleria or the Americana, and there's a number of really good public spaces going up and down Bran, including along the flood control channel. There's some great parks. Those are not activated. But we believe with the new Paseo, there's a lot that can be added to the downtown. More beautification. And then one thing that I'd like to see if we can work with the city on is trying to reduce what I would call the Berlin Wall between the north and the south. Walking across that freeway bridge on the 134 is not the most attractive thing in the world. So how can we try to put planters and make it so people feel as if it really blends the two districts together, the north and the south? Because they're all part of the same district. Some of that can be accomplished through landscaping, some of that can be done through public art. But I think that now that we have gone through the phase of the renewal and the expansion, now I think that we can really move forward and try to capture some of the great assets that you have in the downtown here. Really make this a hub of livability and walkability, business and retail for the entire San Fernando Valley. So we have some pretty lofty goals, and I think we have the ability in working with our board, which has got a lot of great people on it, as well as the city, to achieve all those goals and make all of you, as well as ourselves, proud of this downtown, because I think that there's really no limit to what we can do here. So that's, I'll leave my presentation at that at that point, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that mayor or council might have.
Questions? Questions? We do have a, you have a question?
We'll listen to the speaker first.
We do have a speaker, so thank you.
Thank you.
We may have questions later. But Fran Buchanan? Ms. Buchanan, how much time do you need?
Just a few minutes. I can hardly talk. I got out of sickbed.
Four minutes.
I'm at 319 North Maryland, and I've been battling the greasy restaurants and the high rise for years, and it's only getting worse. I told Mrs. McLean when I called, I think it's like 400% worse than it was four years ago. And we now have cockroaches coming up through our toilets, and it costs a lot of money to have exterminators every week and then blast out everybody's unit. And it really is terrible that I have to bear this because of these dirty facilities. They aren't built to handle what they are handling. They were little mom-and-pop dry goods stores years ago. And something must be done to correct the grease for everybody, but I think I need to be released from my $2,100 a year that I've been paying, and I get nothing for it, absolutely nothing. And this isn't right. I believe the downtown should promote and grow, but I don't think it does someone like us any good, and we need to be released.
Released from payments to the DGA?
Released from the CBD tax. We've already paid $16,000. I think I spoke here, I paid 12 or 14 already before. And it just isn't fair, because I don't receive any benefit. When they did it, I spoke. It was 10 or 12 years ago. And we were supposed to have regular steam cleaning of the alleys, and we were supposed to have locked bins. You go by there now, they're all wide open. Nobody makes any effort to care about sanitation and living conditions that people are contiguous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Can someone address this issue? Because Ms. Buchanan has been coming back repeatedly and addressing the same question, but there seems to be no progress.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We have spoken with Mrs. Buchanan quite a bit over the past year in the capacity of some of these concerns. And from the staff perspective, we see this, there's really two issues that she has. There's, some of it is within the city control and the other is within DGA. So the first item, what she's talking about regarding concerns about the cleanliness, the alley, perhaps some code enforcement issues. For the staff, on that side, we have worked with code enforcement, we have worked with Public Works, we have sent out special steam cleaning. Typically, we do not steam clean the alleys. We did have a special contract to, in an attempt to address and appease some of these concerns that Mrs. Buchanan has had. Now, on the DGA-related item, we have also brought this to the DGA's attention. The DGA decided not to carve her out of the district. Unfortunately for her, that property that she's located on, there are also two other prominent parcels that may, in the future, be a hotel. That is one of the locations within the hotel requests for proposals we have out there. However, there may be another alternative, which is a financial hardship, and in speaking with Mr. Lamandri, that is going to be on the item, on the agenda for February 26th, to consider whether there would be an opportunity to release Mrs. Buchanan from pain in the future. So we've done our best to try to appease some of these concerns, and we'll continue to work with Mrs. Buchanan to do our best.
Question?
Has the Health Department gotten, have you contacted, anyone contacted the Health Department about these issues that they can address or possibly mitigate?
So we have not contacted the Health Department. We'll certainly do that following this meeting. The earlier concerns that we have heard were regarding trash. If you recall, that was one of the issues, some of the odor that emitted from the trash enclosures. We did have code enforcement go out several times on that. Code enforcement did cite some of the property owners or some of the tenants that were there. Unfortunately, this is one of those where we just need to stay diligent and continue to make, essentially make the tenants comply with this. But we will certainly notify the Health Department.
So is it the city's responsibility, the steam cleaning and the locked bins? Are those both city responsibilities, or is that the DGA?
Unfortunately, it's neither. There was once another benefit district, Mr. Lancelphane would have more background on this, but as I understand it, before the current Community Benefit District, at one time, that may have been a responsibility to steam clean the alleys. The way that the agreement is written now with our current Downtown Glendale Association, the alleys are excluded. And in the past, our own city has cleaned some of these alleys, but we no longer do that within the downtown. So it's, we, I guess we service it upon request, but it is not a contract that we've had. And in this case, we provided a special assistance.
So if we can ask Marco, Mrs. Buchanan is kind of, I think she's stating that she felt that it was your, the association that was going to steam clean the alleys and keep that clean and lock the bins and whatever.
Right. So the bins are privately contracted with the different providers, so we don't handle trash bins. We don't do it for Portos, we don't do it for the Americana, or anybody else. The alleys are not part of the assessment district. The only real exception is Maryland, which has sort of alleys in a certain sense. But we don't deal with curb-to-curb. We deal with curb-to-property line. That's always been our responsibility. So normally, a parcel will be assessed. So for example, if you take Mrs. Buchanan's property, what's being assessed is the frontage and the lot and the building's core footage, but there's no back frontage on the alley. So if it's not assessed, then we don't take care of it, and that's pretty standard. So normally, those are considered extensions of the street, and one thing we don't do is take care of streets. We take care of sidewalks in spaces such as that. We've been working with Jennifer and City Public Works, too, to make sure that it's not, what's happening to her is not unreasonable, but you know that we also don't control those tenants. So we're trying our best, and the way we've tried to accommodate it is by adopting this hardship policy, which will be coming up at our next meeting. And if the board believes that she has a genuine economic hardship, then the board can reimburse her. It doesn't exempt her. It reimburses her on an annual basis for perhaps services that she can put into insecticide or whatever type of mitigation. But that's not a situation that we created. I don't think it's one that you created. I think it's just sort of like what happens when you live, have residents living in a downtown environment. Those things are going to occur. So we're trying our best to resolve it, but there's no magic wand. We can't make it go away like that.
And the owners of the business just don't want to cooperate?
That's between the landlords and the tenants. And I'm sure the businesses don't want to act as a burden, but I'm sure they're thinking much more about what happens inside the house rather than outside the house. So we'll continue to work with them on that.
Let me ask you while you're here. So a lot of these events that are occurring within the DGA, we're involved with, the city's involved with, but there was a very strange incident with the Jingle Bell Run this year where, you know, I found out because people were calling me and asking why there is so much traffic, why most of downtown is shut down. And frankly, I had to ask city manager, assistant city manager, and no one knew about it, which is very strange for there to be a massive event with 850 participants and downtown being shut down half a day, and for us not even have any notice of it. So how would something like that happen?
Well, this is the, I think it's the sixth year that that's happened, and I would assume that they have to get police approval to shut down the street and go through the city process for that. So why, the council didn't know, I apologize for that. I had assumed that people within the city would be informing you of those things, but the Jingle Bell Run is not a new thing.
I know it's not.
It's been going on, and it happens the same weekend every year. So, and I know that it impacts a lot of the retailers, Americana's concerned about it, et cetera. We can always revisit it, you know, particularly if only 850 people are participating in it, then that's grounds for reviewing it, so that's not an issue, I don't think. I think we can deal with that. And I apologize for you not knowing about it.
No, it's just, it was strange. Any questions?
I have from our city staff.
Okay, sure. Go ahead.
Shall I sit down?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does the city have the right to waive anybody's assessed value in downtown Glendale Association area?
No, we do not, as Ms. Herrmezzo makes her way up to the podium if there's other questions, but we do not have that ability.
No?
No.
So I have a couple of questions to two parts. When we call the code enforcement, if there is trash issues on any of these restaurants or any of the businesses, do we notify the landlords as well? Because it's landlord's responsibility, basically, as you was mentioning, between landlords and the tenants, that landlords enforce their requirements of the leases, whatever they have in their leases, to enforce their lease and make sure the tenant keeps the property clean. So we don't have to, you know, and Ms. Buchanan was here, has been here several times. That's one. And the second part, question that I have is, if you release Ms. Buchanan from her obligations or her not paying the fees to the DGA, would that solve that problem that she's having with the buildings today?
Yes, sir. So on your first point regarding the landlords and the code enforcement, my understanding is when we notify code enforcement, that they're generally dealing with the tenants. So this is a great recommendation, and moving forward, we'll suggest that they also reach out to the landlords. Regarding the other point about whether this will relieve some of Mrs. Buchanan's concerns if she is released from the pain, paying for the assessments, she will still have these concerns. The reality is that we will still have the issues with some of the cleanliness complaints that she's had about the alley. There will likely still continue to be these ongoing concerns about trash. Unfortunately, this is also part of what it means to be, to live in an urban environment. So there's a very delicate balance. We've also notified code enforcement throughout the years on this, and sometimes they've said, you know, there really are no violations. And it's hard to hear that, because you would, as you walk down the alley, you may think, like, smell something, I see something, this isn't pleasant. So unfortunately, some of this is the realities of living in and having your neighbors face, you know, the service alley for some of these residents.
That's why those trash cans or those trash areas are located in the alleys, so they won't be visible from the streets, but...
Correct. And unfortunately, some of the residents, if you were to walk in that alley, they have windows that go down. They have their parking spaces that also share that same service alley with the restaurants. So that is something that we were cognizant of, but still are doing our best to try to appease all parties.
Yeah, I think if the landlords are, they're aware of it, they can, because otherwise the tenant will breach of their contract, so maybe they can enforce it better than we can do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian, any questions?
No. So what is staff seeking? Is there a motion to accept the DGA's calendar year 2018 annual report and calendar year 2019 budget?
I would do that. I'll move that motion. It sounds like you have a lot of good ideas. I think with the extension and the addition of Artsok Paseo, I think it sounds like an exciting year, so I will move the item.
Second. May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Next item? Two would be Director of Community Development regarding density limit options for the downtown specific plan, DSP, floor area ratio and dwelling units per acre, two A motion providing additional direction to staff.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, as you're aware, last month, we were before you on the DSP amendments, receiving feedback from the council in terms of the workshops that we have held with you before heading to the Planning Commission and then coming back to you, hopefully by the middle to end of March. There was one area where council had some more questions, and we needed to provide a little more detail in terms of the density limit options for the DSP. We are here before you this afternoon with Bradley Calvert and Velias Ametidis to take you through this presentation, hopefully receive some feedback on this item. With that, Mr. Calvert.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, council members. As mentioned, we are bringing back the topic of dwelling units per acre versus floor area ratio measurements of density per council request. We wanted to come back and provide information on how it would, how it impacts the vision that council has established for the DSP, a number of the elements that have been presented and created as part of a revised and improved DSP. So what we want to do is talk about the comparison. How are these two systems differently? How does it impact those things that are priorities, such as open space, the community benefit elements, the ability to develop a property, and several other metrics? And then ultimately, we'd like to get direction from council to continue with our FAR system, including the tiered recommendation system that we developed, or transfer over to a dwelling units per acre measurement. Timeline, so here on February 12th, our council date, we have DRB this week, Planning Commission next week. As mentioned, we are coming back in early March to introduce the ordinance for the amendments to the DSP, and we hope to have that adopted by the end of March. An overview of our current DSP, it is a, what we call a hybrid form-based code. The form-based code really focuses on the design of buildings, of the public realm, of how that building engages with public life and the, essentially all public spaces. It's really focusing on the aesthetic quality, but it uses an FAR measurement, which controls its density, and that's a direct relationship to the size of the site. It combines traditional zoning, the hybrid version combines traditional zoning as well as significant design requirements, and this usually includes some sort of standards and guidelines. Most hybrid systems, such as the one we have, focuses on guidelines, less on standards. Again, it uses floor area ratio to measure its density. What we currently have would essentially be the first iteration of a hybrid form-based code for the city. It worked well in its beginnings. There obviously were some challenges. That's why we're here today. That's why we're amending the DSP. And a lot of that had to do with the fact it was lacking teeth. It hadn't made the full transition over to essentially a form-based code, but it was a necessary step. It was one that the city had to make in order to move away from traditional zoning, to put the emphasis on the public realm, to put the emphasis on quality design. And what we hope to do, what we intend to do with the amendments, is to make that transition over to almost fully a form-based code that focuses on that quality of life. This top image represents essentially conventional zoning. This is what you would typically see in a single-use neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood. Focuses really on the density, how many units are applied. A hybrid system similar to what we have now has some design standards, some are mostly guidelines, and again, uses that more traditional way of trying to measure density. It's that iterative step, if you will, the interim step. The hybrid or the more form-based code, which we're focusing on, really focuses on the design. How do we take that box that can be filled with a certain square footage or a certain number of units, and how do we create something more nuanced, something that's more representative of the city vision? And this is where we start to put in streetscape standards and we start to put in building design standards. So essentially, we're at the middle. We're trying to advance to that image on the last one there on the right side. So floor area ratio, this is what really responds to an urban environment. The reason why we use floor area ratio in a downtown environment, or in a transit-oriented development, or a special purpose interest district, is really necessary for mixed use. It's hard to apply a dwelling unit per acre measurement to non-residential uses, to mixed-use buildings, to residential buildings with retail at the base or office at the base. And what it really does, it focuses on the public realm and the design, as I had mentioned before. It's still a measure of density, but it measures it on its scale, its size, its relationship to the site. Similar to what we've proposed as part of this tiered system, is that you can put in certain requirements and certain measurements that would help throttle and regulate those number of units that would ultimately be created. The image that you see at the bottom there, this is just four different ways. You can articulate the same density. You can have something that takes up 100% of the site. This is essentially two FAR and what's close to a one-acre site. That could be two floors, or you could go all the way up to eight floors at 12,500 square feet. These are all the same densities, though. Dwelling unit per acres, this is really more focused on a single-use neighborhood, a single-family neighborhood, maybe transition areas. It's great when you're trying to create a certain character, you're trying to maintain a specific character of a neighborhood. Precisely controls the number of units that can be built, but it is limited in its compatibility with a form-based code or a hybrid form-based code. It makes creating standards and guidelines much more challenging, and that becomes the driving force. And it's hard to combine those two, because at some point, you just have too many regulations, and it just won't quite work. The graphic that you see at the bottom is how you would represent the dwelling unit per acre. If that site is one acre, one, obviously is one, the one on the far left, you see one house on the site, one dwelling unit per acre, all the way up to 48. A little bit different than the FAR, because you notice that this starts to grow, rather than with the hybrid form-based code, we start to sculpt the ultimate results in terms of the built form. So revisiting the council DSP priorities, we've heard that improved in larger open space, better designed, less boxy buildings, better materials, more articulation in roof lines and modulations, overall, just better aesthetics for our buildings. Improved building materials, wider sidewalks was also a key interest point, and creating a more diverse housing mix for larger units, really to support the creation of households with children or multi-generational households, but primarily to ensure that our downtown is accessible and livable for residents of all ages, households of all compositions. So these are really, have been our driving forces throughout the process. So focusing in on the diverse housing stock, as I mentioned, this is a great opportunity for us to really diversify those household types. Households with children, many households are becoming multi-generational, grandparents, other relatives moving in with them. So what we wanted to look at is where do we kind of fit in right now? How successful have we been in creating an environment that's been conducive to households with children, for example? This chart represents the total population under the age of 14 for the census tracts in downtown. This does capture a small portion in the northwest that's not in the downtown boundary, and it represents approximately 6% or 7% of the under-14 population. But overall, within these census tracts, we have 15.5% of our population under the age of 14. We use that as a cutoff, because the census tracts, or the census data goes up to 19, and at that point, we start capturing a lot of college students, so we really wanted to focus on youth. How are we performing in that? The other thing to look at is, we use data from 2010, 2013, and 2017. There are American Community Survey estimates that occur between the decennial census. And what we have, if you look at these diagonal numbers, the under-5 from 2010, the 5 to 9 in 2013, and the 10 to 14 in 2017 are very important. You want to see those numbers, those percents, maintain or stay in close range. Essentially, that means as you move to each census... Essentially, that means as you move to each census, the child that was under the age of five now in 2013 is in middle school, in 2017, or in elementary school, and by the time you've hit 2017, they're either in middle school or in high school. And what that's, what that's telling you is if you're retaining those children in downtown. What most cities see is a major drop-off after children hit five, because they don't have schools in their downtown or near their downtown. We are actually very fortunate, we have schools right next to our downtown and they're walkable, and that's why we believe that this number has maintained in terms of children within the DSP. The under-five population is also very important. We've heard from council is that if, if all of these families or, or residents are moving into our city, why haven't our school rolls gone up? A lot of that is because these children just aren't quite ready for school yet. In 2017, you have 986 children that are underneath, under the age of five, so they haven't hit enrollment yet. What we would look for in the next batch of information is, did when they hit five to nine enter elementary school, did our rolls go up at that point? But overall, we are performing very well in terms of having children downtown. That doesn't mean we should stop, though.
Question?
Yes.
What's the total population you're writing, the entire population? What's that, 14,979?
So in 2010, that was the population of these census tracts, 14,979.
For that area?
All population, all age, yes.
Not just the kids are obviously...
Correct.
Like 30,000 some, 3,300, so total population.
And the next column would be the total under 14. So currently in 2017 is 17,176, of which over 2,600 are under the age of 14.
So, I think we went over this on the, on the briefing, I just want to make sure I have this, this, these numbers correctly. That 17,000 in 2017, where is this data from?
American Community Survey, so it's part of the census.
And how many people do they survey?
Uh, we'd have to go back and look at what the sampling size was, but...
Okay. So, this is not only in downtown specific plan area, right?
Correct.
They're, they're, the adjacent residential areas are part of this survey.
In the northwestern portion, correct.
Right, so if I have my map correctly, from central, it goes all the way to Columbus.
It's approximately Columbus or Pacific.
Okay, so if it goes to Pacific, it's even further, further out. So all of these streets, Wilson, Salem, California, Myrtle, Lexington, Milford, they're all part of this survey, which is currently, basically they're the highest dense multi-residential, so one of the parts of the highest dense multi-residential areas that we have. So these numbers are reflective, I think, my belief is that, because it doesn't say all of that 17,000, how many of them are in what, you know, it doesn't have the specific streets, but when you add all these residential areas to downtown specific plan area, that's where you get that number, I think. I don't think that 17,000 live in downtown specific plan area.
So we pulled the information just before we came in, and there's approximately about 1,100 kids that live in those two census tracts. If we took that out, we'd still be at about 9% or over 9%, and we would also be removing any of the new residents that live along that central corridor. And actually, if we go to the next slide, with that included, we're at about 15.5. If we were to take that out, we'd be over 9%, which would still put us ahead of Pasadena, a little bit behind Burbank, and if we put it in a more national perspective, it would still put us ahead of pretty much everyone else. We've been successful in that regard. We can go back and run it based on census block group and try to pull some of those out specifically, but even if we take out just that entire area, we'd still have a very large percentage of children compared to most cities.
So 9% live in downtown specific area?
Correct, if you were to take that area, and that would actually still remove some of the downtown area as well, if we removed those census tracts. So census tracts don't necessarily follow the boundaries that we have. In fact, the other cities that we looked at, similar thing, they start to capture areas that are just outside of that area.
I think for the Planning Commission meeting, it's important to have those numbers, as to if you go block by block if you can, because, I don't know, I may be wrong, but I, I don't think there are more children living in downtown specific area than this high-dense residential neighborhoods on, on the west side of it or on the east side of it, so, okay.
We can try to pull that by block group.
Question, so when you say that we're getting these, we're getting the data for 2013, 2017 from the census?
It's not census.
Where do you get it from?
So they run an American Community Survey, essentially they do three, one, three, and five-year estimates in between the 2000 and, 2010 and 2020 census, so that we can update our population numbers, and that's where that comes from.
And how do they do the census?
They essentially take a sampling size, and depending on that, if it's a one-year, three-year, or a five-year, that sample size is larger, because they spend more time working with us so they can collect more data. So the five tends to be the most reliable estimate that we can get, so that's what we use to collect the 2013 and 2017 data, was the five-year window. And then 2020, all of that, they, they adjust that and correct that once the new census data comes out as well, so, but right now, they are estimates at this point.
They're just estimates, okay, thanks.
So where we stand in terms of other cities, we went and pulled a number of other ones, we pulled some in the region, we pulled other larger cities. You'll see cities on here such as Arlington, Virginia, Bellevue, Washington, Seattle, Los Angeles, Atlanta. We polled Atlanta, Seattle, Bellevue, and Arlington specifically, because there are only three cities in this country right now, major cities that are experiencing, or actual growth in under-18 population. Birth rates are actually down, growth for children is down in most cities, but those three actually are experiencing growth, and we wanted to see how we compare to them or related suburbs. We left Washington DC out of here, because in the planning world, that's kind of like New York, it's basically all a downtown, it's hard to decide which area might actually be really urban, because it is such an urban place. But when we stack up against all of these cities, e- even if we were to remove our northwestern quadrant and just keep it in downtown, we would still rank ahead of everybody with the exception of Burbank at this point. Most cities tend to fall in that 5.5% to 4.7% range in terms of children living in their downtown. And again, a lot of that has to go back to schools, a lot of these cities don't have schools in an urban environment, such as we do. And another way to kind of show that information is just by pure number. We still have more than cities such as Atlanta, Los Angeles, and Seattle. That blue bar represents the percent of the population under 14, red represents the entire population of those census tracts. And again, much like our information for Glendale, these also have areas that can bleed just beyond the downtown boundary, just because those census tracts aren't perfectly aligned right now.
So this, this cities that we're comparing Glendale to, did they have the same development boom in their downtowns like we did here? Like Arlington, Bellevue, Emeryville, Emeryville, California, do they have a huge downtown? Emeryville has this big of a downtown?
Not a huge downtown. The reason why we chose them is they actually have some of these housing standards in place in terms of trying to create an environment that's more amenable to households with children, so we wanted to see how they performed. We didn't put it in the slide deck here, but we also looked at the growth rates, and they actually had a, had an upswing because of the standards they put in place. In terms of Bellevue, between 2000 and 2016, their population went from about 1,000 to 2,000 to about 15,000, just in their downtown alone. Seattle is well-known for its kind of growth boom, and Atlanta continues to rank as, you know, one of the top five growing cities, so all of those, and actually including Arlington, are all rapidly growing places, and we wanted to choose places like that as well, so it'd be comparable to here. And we can put together some of the other data and distribute as well, in terms of the overall population growth, we just try to distill it down to this element about households with children. So that brings us back to our system. We had recommended a tiered development system, tier one, tier two, tier three, with increasing community benefit, with one of those features being this diverse housing mix. Currently, we've set that at 20% for tier two of two and three-bedroom units, which also have to very, follow very specific design standards that we've established, that we've reviewed in prior meetings, and then moving up to tier three, it would go all the way up to 30%. But right now, these numbers are just placeholders. If council has input on that, we would like to, to hear from that, so that we can modify and test it appropriately. But really, this is focusing on the feedback that we didn't want to see just studio units being built downtown, that we wanted a diverse mix, that we want households to be diverse. And that's using our current FAR system. Again, if you stack that up against the dwelling unit per acre measurement, it becomes rather cumbersome in terms of how we can implement some of these extra standards, or if we're even able to. So again, as part of that tiered system, we recommended a cap on studios as well. There was the concern that if we had a requirement in there for a certain number of, of units that fit that diverse housing mix, that the rest might be filled with studios, so we wanted to put a cap in there. And what we're seeing, what's been built essentially in recent years is approximately 142 dwelling units per acre in the most recent developments. About 25% of those are two bedrooms, you have a chart in your packet as part of the council report, and you can see the breakdown on the recent developments. Now while that does say 25% two bedrooms, there were a handful of buildings that actually did about 35, 40, even up to 50% two bedrooms, and they carried the weight of almost all of those recent projects. Most landed somewhere between, say, 12 and 18%, 16% in terms of two-bedroom units, and many were coming in at well over 20% in terms of studios. So what we're proposing as part of this tiered system, if you were to convert that into a dwelling unit per acre measurement, would be about 122 units per acre, because we would put that cap on studios at 10%. We would up the requirement for two and three bedrooms, and in this case, we know what to expect. We know we would get those, because it would be part of the requirement of that tiered system. And while those percentages may not deviate all that greatly between what's been built and what we're proposing here, also remember that we have included substantial design standards of how these units are built, so that they are amenable to multi-generational households, households with kids, and less focused on, say, roommate situations. So we wanted to test a number of analyses, we wanted to see, or a number of scenarios, and see how they would perform. We're using the existing development, or what's been built recently, using that existing FAR and our existing DSP. We're also including what we're referring to as scenario one, and that's if we put a 90-unit dwelling unit per acre cap on development. Scenario two, which is 70. These two numbers were important, because essentially 90 represents the middle tier, 70 represents by right development, if we were to convert that into dwelling unit per acre. Scenario three is what we're proposing. That's approximately 122 units per acre, but again, we're using FAR to measure that, and we'll explain why FAR is key to that measure of density. And we wanted to test that against what's the economic feasibility of these different systems? How does it fulfill the need for community benefit, or what we've outlined is, is some of the proposed community benefit elements? How does that relate to the improved design standards that we've brought forth to council? How, how well does it control actual unit density? How well does it control and contribute to creating a diverse mix of units? And then overall, is it achieving all of the things that we have discussed during these workshops as part of those DSP amendments? So the first is economic feasibility. Obviously, the current DSP works well. We've seen a number of projects built, we've raised many questions as to whether or not we could be getting better community benefit, because those projects clearly financially have, have worked in this environment. Scenario one, which is the 90 dwelling unit per acre cap, could potentially work. That's why we have this middle tier as part of our FAR calculation, but it really does hamper our ability to extract community benefit, and when it comes to larger sites, it would actually drop the value of those sites. And when I say larger, I mean ones that have a approximate FAR density or maximum right now of 5.2, would lose about 30% of their value. So again, making those projects potentially economically infeasible. Scenario two, where we're looking at a 70 dwelling unit per acre cap, is just not economically feasible. It's 30% reduction on any site, it's up to 60% reduction on sites that have an, that currently, right now, have an FAR of up to 5.2, and it makes those the opportunity for any development on those properties to happen very challenging. The proposed system, we found, does work, enough value has been created in there, and most importantly, because we're not running these numbers so that we can find out whether or not developers can make a profit, we're finding out whether or not we have enough room to get our community benefit that we would like to see. And that includes the increased open space that we've proposed, and the diversity in housing mix, plus another, another, another number of options that are part of that as well. So...
Sorry, so how do we come up with these, so for example, scenario one and two, how do those come about?
So these were tested based on the tiered system that we created, and then also feedback from prior discussions regarding the dwelling unit per acre. So we were trying to peg numbers. Right now, we're getting about 140. What we're, what we're proposing, as the tiered system came in at around 120, so we wanted to kind of keep an even step, 20 to 30 unit difference as we scaled it up and down.
You started with 70 is the lowest, and then you...
Correct, moved up.
Add 20 some units...
Correct.
Just arbitrary, you were just trying to...
For the most part, yeah. I mean, it's, it's, in some ways, it's a conversion factor, because we're looking at the, the units that have been built compared against the, the overall size of the building, acres of the site.
Okay, thank you.
And that relates directly to community benefit. And while these projects that have been built recently, obviously held the economic potential for community benefit, it didn't happen, and a lot of that didn't happen because of the current guidelines and, and need for standards. Scenario one, which is approximately the 90 dwelling unit per acre cap, we could get some benefit, but it's likely going to be very similar to our current conditions. Scenario two, it's just not feasible, there's not enough value that's been created for us to be able to extract open space, to extract wider sidewalks, to get those, those diverse housing unit mix essentially. And so far, from what we've seen as part of the proposed system, it, it, it has worked, especially with the larger sites. We do have enough economic value in there that we can extract the open space. When we tested that, we could go up to about 13% open space, and we've been playing with different percentages for that housing diversity mix as well.
If I can ask, with the existing model, approximately 142 units per acre, if it was economically a feasible model, so why didn't it achieve council's vision compared to a, a more scaled-down scenario where we believe it will? Is it a function of size, or is it just a function of more, more stringent requirements that were...
Requirements, they, they were not in place. And, and part of, and actually, it'll be in the next slide, the relationship between those two, the ability to put those standards in place and the kind of measurement that's needed, and even some of the density is needed in order to ask for that kind of, that back-and-forth exchange. So in terms of the existing, the scenario one and scenario two, we could expect much of the similar in terms of sidewalk width, planting, open space, and these are diagrams that we had shown at the last presentation of how we could move these, these elements around, this density and this massing around. With what we're proposing, we believe that we could get up to about 16% open space on larger sites, the wider sidewalks, all of those other features that we have found to be important in downtown. So improved design standards, again, to the question that was posed, they're just not there. We don't have the standards, we have guidelines, and, and guidelines frankly just lack teeth. In order to be able to put those standards in place, you need something that focuses on design as well, the measure of density, which is FAR, that focuses on the scale and the massing. In scenario one, we could see some improved standards, there's a little bit of wiggle room to work with, but remember, every modulation that we make, every roofline modulation that we change, every material requirement that we put in place, every balcony we ask to be, be recessed, has an economic consequence. And that's what's also been tested as part of this as well. We want to make sure that what we're, the density that's allowed there can tolerate that amount of change, and make, one, our vision for the design better, but it can also withstand the community benefit as well. And we found that that's just also not viable with the lower dwelling unit per acre cap, but in some, it actually just doesn't work that well with the dwelling unit per acre system, as we had mentioned before, just because it's two conflicting ways of zoning and density. What we found in this, in the proposed tiered system, is that it does offer that flexibility, because it focuses on that box, it focuses on how we influence that box, shape it, and move those pieces around of the things that we've identified as being important. The ability to control unit density, right now, we have zero control, in terms of the actual number of units that are being built, it's all based on that FAR. In scenario one and scenario two, we do have very specific control, we're saying there's only 70 units, there's only 90 units that are allowed, and what we're proposing as part of this system, we do have some, somewhere in the middle. We may not be controlling the specific number of units, but our requirements on the studios and the two and three bedrooms start to shape and mold how many would actually be on sites. We may not be able to say you can only have 90 units on this site, but we can make sure that the building doesn't get stacked full of studios, and it tips well over the scales that we would prefer not to see for future development. So scenario one and two are great at controlling it specifically, and what we're proposing, we're, the intent on there is that it would be able to influence and, and shape the total number of units with it being expected. The ability to control unit mix, as we're seeing now, we, we don't have a certain control on it, we're not saying what we want to see in terms of studios, or two bedrooms, or three bedrooms, or even one. Scenarios one and two, we have, there's the intent to do it, there's the intent to put a dwelling unit per acre cap in the hope that if we created a big enough zoning box, that they would fill it with larger units, but with scenario three, we're specifically guaranteeing those results. And that's because we put these percentages in for the different-sized units. To visualize that, in scenario one, this is assuming that we had about a 55-foot-tall box that we could fill based on our zoning, and if someone were to build a, a large percentage And if someone were to build a, a large percentage of two- and three-bedrooms, as we show in this one, the red blocks represent a three-bedroom, the yellow are two, the cyan are one, in theory, they could fill this box and go all the way up and achieve their ninety-dwelling units per acre. This site is a half an acre, so it's about forty-five units, forty-four in the other example. In theory, they could. They could go to the fourth floor, they could give us approximately, or close to fifty percent two-bedrooms. But if we don't actually have a control on the type of units that go in, they could actually build Scenario Two, where the magenta, or the purple, represents studios, the cyan color represents one-bedrooms, and the yellow represent two. They could stack it full of studios, because in this case, or in one-bedrooms, in this case, they could fit all of their ninety units per acre within two stories, substantially reducing their construction cost. Now, obviously, this isn't an exact situation, it's not an exact site, but looking at it as an example, you can still meet that requirement and do it with several more units, or, or, not several more units, but lower heights, less construction cost. Another thing that we've brought up before is that, the thing to keep in mind is, a lot of the larger developments are coming from other locations. They're coming from companies not directly located in Glendale. Typically, they, they sell their buildings off on it within a number of years. They don't have the incentive to build the long-term need of two- and three-bedrooms, they're looking to fill and then sell the property. That's typically how more modern real estate, larger apartment buildings work. So there's not a true incentive for them to build these larger units. And what we're proposing as part of that tiered system is that we specifically say, we need X percent of your units to be two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms, and we don't want more than X percent on studios.
Can I ask you, go back to that point, why is it the disincentive for a developer to build larger units? Why, because they're easier to, they're harder to fill?
Potentially, yes. As we've heard from our economic team before, right now, the market is really moving, it's continuing to move towards studios and one-bedrooms, smaller units, for a variety of different reasons that are not just specific to Glendale. So they're going to build, I mean, development by nature is a reactionary process. They're not out in front. They're not seeing that we may have X percent of married couples that may have kids and many larger units downtown. They're building to the reaction of the market right now. It's also just easier. You can fit that into two stories rather than having to build these larger units. Essentially, the summary of that.
So why, so they study the market, and the market tells them in essence that it, singles and studios is where it's at, and therefore build more of those. So where do families go? I mean, where do they?
That's been the big challenge. We know that single-family homeownership in, in many urban areas, especially in California, is becoming harder and harder to obtain. Multifamily condominiums tend to be a great entry point for families. But they're also trying to get their maximum return, and to be able to rent ten one-bedrooms in lieu of three two-bedrooms is likely going to be much easier.
Okay. Yes.
Just to, just to follow up what, what the mayor was saying, I think different developers use different market studies. And if you look at the local developments, developers, they're all, look at the ones that is being built right now, up against downtown, on Myrtle, on Salem, all of those little streets that's right up against downtown, they're all between thirteen to eighteen-hundred units, and there is a waiting list.
Square feet, right?
Yes, thirteen to eighteen-hundred square feet per unit, two bedrooms, some three bedrooms. And they have one bedrooms in there, in there, but they have a good unit mix in their, in their development. And there is a waiting list, that they can't build them fast enough. So the ones that they understand the Glendale's market, they build accordingly. The ones that they have this more global idea of, of filling out their, their, you know, they're filling in their, their developments, they look at different. I think what I'm trying to personally, or what we're trying to achieve is something in between, something that will, you know, has a little bit more balance than what we see on this chart that you provided to us today, so.
Thank you. That's why I was asking, I was wondering, I mean, families gotta go somewhere, right?
Right. I mean, it's, it's not only families today, it's the, the younger generation that they're, yeah, they're, they're becoming families, and they're, 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 they're singles today, and they're newlyweds today. I think our goal is to build something for the future, so if they want to stay in the city that they were born in, they could. That's the opportunity, I think, we, we collectively would try to provide for them, that's all.
And that's where we think that percentage requirement, you're right, the larger-scale developments may not produce that. And when we're writing code, or when we're creating standards, we are usually playing to the lowest common denominator. And we're also trying to create something intentionally. What is it that we want to create? Do we want to create this diverse mix of housing? Then being very specific about that, which is what we're trying to do in terms of that tiered system, would hopefully accomplish that. If we do leave it at just a dwelling unit per acre mix and hope that the, the height or the massing could help control what kind of units go in there, it's still leaving it to chance. And it may work fine for the smaller developers, but it's not going to work necessarily for the larger projects. And it's not an issue that's specific to Glendale, this is how development has occurred in most places right now.
I have a question. I know you live in a complex where there are children.
Correct.
Correct.
Are there a lot of children? I mean, it's hard for me to understand that, or how to get the fact that a family would move into the downtown area, you know, with two or three kids. Do you see that, I mean, are we seeing that a lot? That there are families moving into these, when, when, when the, the development has three bedrooms, are there families renting? Do we have any idea of that? Are they renting with two kids or one kid, or?
We don't have a measurement on the, on the current units. I mean, we could always maybe attempt to survey if, if possible. I think in terms of the, the number of children in a household, you are seeing a trend towards one-child households now. Nationwide, the, the trend is people are waiting longer to have children, they tend to have one. Anecdotally, obviously, anything I say about the building I live in, that's just what I observe. And most of those households that do have children typically have just one. And that is, tends to be the more common structure if you're going to live in an urban environment, because a two-bedroom works for that. A three-bedroom could also work if it's available, but you know that a two will if it's, it's a couple and a child.
I, I, I just have a problem picturing a family with two kids moving into, you know, one of these developments that we have in downtown, but I guess it happens.
And it works in some cities. I think if you look at Vancouver, and, and we tried to pull many of their standards, that's, that actually was one of our, our base studies there, what worked for them. They've been highly successful in it in terms of the requirement of, of a certain unit mix, of the design standards that they put in place. They even go as far as saying certain developments need to put in daycare centers or contribute to a new school in the area. And you have areas that are nineteen, twenty, twenty-six percent, and they are very, very dense urban environments. These are places where fifty thousand people per square mile are living. It's, they're very dense places. So I think if you're intentional about it, you can achieve that.
All right, I think the, the reason someone may have difficulty imagining a family moving into the buildings in our downtown is because of the buildings in our downtown. I mean, that being the problem, and I think that's what we're trying to address now.
And that goes to the aesthetics, but it also goes to the amenities. I mean, as part of what we're proposing here, you would, if, if you were to participate in this system, you would also have to provide children's play areas. You know, there's no more, it's not just having paved plazas on the second level that children can run around in, but where are the play areas? We would give priority to uses, or not priority, but we would give essentially that additional development potential to get to the maximum if they were to provide uses that are necessary to that, such as a daycare. You know, that's part of what we've listed out as Chapter Seven, the community benefits. And we mentioned that before, it's not just the housing, we need to make sure that other features of the urban environment are conducive to families. We're very fortunate, we have the schools. Most cities don't have that.
And Mr. Mayor, just, just to add to that, I think if you look at, Glendale is very unique. If you look at our downtown, or that urban environment that we, we, we're considering here today, from one thirty-four to Colorado, and from Pacific to, let's say, Jackson or even Glendale Avenue, that hub is our downtown, basically. And over sixty percent of our renters are, sixty percent of the population are renters. And most of them live below one thirty-four. And if you look at these areas, they're all, I can't tell you, eighty-five percent are families who live in, in, within that block. And if you go further south, south of Colorado, the streets between Central and Brand and Brand and Glendale Avenue, all those side streets going east and west, they're all families live there. Why? Because these units were built, the way they were built, even in, in the seventies, there were two bedrooms, two, they're not very large, they're nine hundred square feet, eight to twelve hundred square feet, right? But they're all two bedrooms, two bath, and most of them have at least one or two parking spaces. So that's why families live there. It's, it's not all, you know, young, 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 young adults living there. And I think that's what I want to kind of, they provided, when they built these units in seventies, they provided housing for their children, when they grew up, they can stay in that area and be their neighbors. So I think that's, that's the goal. That's personally my goal, to provide some sort of a housing that the future generation can, again, I'm repeating myself, but that's, that's what we're going to do.
Actually, I'm going to go to this last slide, just because of, of that point there, is that I, I think it is important to note that what we're proposing of this, of this tiered system is to be intentional in that way, and it's not just about the actual unit mix. We're having those mechanisms and those controls in there, but it's also just about creating the type of buildings and the type of surrounding environment that diverse households want to be in. That essentially anybody, whether you're single, or you have two kids or three, three kids, you could live in this urban environment, still thrive, and then you can stay here as well, and you become rooted in the community. When we stack up all of these, it really goes down to, comes down to council priorities. Do we really want to control the, the number of units? If so, our Scenario One and Two, that would be the route to go. If, I think we all have agreed that the existing conditions have, they need to improve. With the Scenario Three that we're proposing here, this tiered system, we believe that we can be very intentional in terms of the results of the units, the unit mix that we get, as well as maintaining that ability to influence the design, and not just influence, but require it, put it in as, as standards, that we, about as far as we can transition into a form-based code at that point, and give us the, the ability to influence what that aesthetic quality and that urban quality of life is like. Lastly, one thing that we were concerned about as we looked into it is that if we were to put a dwelling unit per acre cap on this, that was anything substantially lower than what's been built recently, is that we may hear back from the state on this because of affordable housing issues, particularly if we're looking at, at Scenarios One and Two. Again, this is why we think that Scenario Three might be the perfect compromise. It's not a substantial change in the density. We are still able to meet the council's goals in terms of aesthetic quality, urban life, but also the unit diversity mix. But we also want to try to stay out of any potential issues with changing that level of density that can be achieved on these sites. So lastly, really what we want to ask councils, do we want to continue with what we've proposed, which is the FAR measurement for density? And it's the tiered system that we're looking at. Right now, we do have that, it's the twenty and the thirty percent mix of two- and three-bedrooms for Tier Two and Three. That is something that could be modified. It does not have to stay at that percentage. In fact, we did bring it up based on the last council meeting. So we could still modify those elements, or we could change this to the dwelling unit per acre measurement, or if there's any other direction the council would like to provide us.
What was your recommendation with respect to sticking with the FAR measurement versus the dwelling unit per acre ratio?
I believe sticking with the FAR and the tiered system is what's going to give us the most flexibility to accomplish everything. I mean, that, that was really why, how, why it was set up that way, so that we could accomplish all of the things that were important that we defined in these workshops.
Very well. Any questions?
Yes. There's different zonings that we created, mixed-use commercial, I'm sorry, did I cut it? Oh, okay. Mixed-use residential, residential entertainment. What, what is this about? I mean, right now, downtown-specific planning, it's all one zoning, right?
So that was not zoning, that's actually street-type designation? And that was more about the design character along each street? So the parkway width, the sidewalk width, it's not the use that's actually, or, or the density that's on the site. It's really about the character of that street.
Okay, so if you're on Harvard, for example, which is close to Brand, or, or Artak, or, if you're on Harvard and you want to have a development, and you want to put some commercial in the bottom, would this allow you, or it would just?
I don't have the, what's the classification that we put on there? The only one that doesn't have commercial is essentially that East Broadway area, the residential streets, the green, because we did really want to preserve the residential character there. Any other street, commercial is allowed.
Right, because like Wilson is not residential, Harvard is not, it's residential, but it's a, you know, major east and west, it could use some.
The mixed-use residential still allows for commercial uses. It's, it's speaking more towards the design aesthetic of those streets, the quality of those streets, how those buildings engage with it, and also the uses that we anticipate being most frequent there.
Because mixed-use residential, the ones that you have is on Central, right? Am I correct?
No, that is a mixed-use commercial.
Okay, mixed-use, the one on, is it Brand? It's very, very, very small, I hardly can read this thing. So mixed-use residential that you have on, on Brand, is it Brand? No, it's not even Brand. It's Orange.
Correct.
So would that allow a commercial?
Yes, you could still have commercial there. But it's creating a, hopefully, a character that's a little more residential in nature, slower, calmer, but commercial services are still allowed.
Yeah, because Orange has a lot of commercial services right now. And this was just an example. So what is the difference, what are the differences between this, this, this different, different zones or areas that you created? Are the setbacks different? Are the heights different?
Correct. The setbacks are different. And how, whether it's a residential use or a commercial use engages with that street? Do we want something that's more active? Do we want to create more space for outdoor dining? Or do we want to bring those buildings closer to the, the back of the sidewalk and promote a street that's a little more docile, if you will? But it really speaks to the, the parkway widths, the sidewalk widths, the building-adjacent zone width. It's not the, the use or the density.
Okay, I'm gonna have to review that one more time, but that's fine. So, okay. Thank you. So do we have, are, is this?
Let's see. Other questions? No questions.
I just have a general question. Do we present this to general public to get their feedback? Adal?
So we have been to the Chamber of Commerce, we've been to a number of other neighborhood association meetings where we've presented this. We have the DRB this coming Thursday, Planning Commission next week. We still have the Homeowners Coordinating Council, and I believe, oh, the Downtown Glendale Association as well. And so far, in terms of the neighborhoods that we've spoken to outside of downtown, they've responded favorably. We've spoken to the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association about it, recently spoke at the Royal Canyon Property Owners Association meeting, and we're, we will do the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council for a second time.
I don't know if I said in this sitting, but what's the reason we put this in a small writing? I mean, it's very hard to read. Then we have all these pages in the back, it's nothing in it. Why we make it so small to make it harder to read?
We can print that out on a larger sheet next time. The timeline admittedly is, we keep filling it in, the text keeps getting smaller and smaller on us, so. But we will keep that in mind for next time.
And we are making a standard, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, to have one slide per page, so we do apologize for, for the two, because it, it does make it difficult to, to read. So we will, we'll make sure to do that.
Thank you.
Then again, we are saving a couple of times.
One more question? So I, I found those, those setbacks that I was looking for. So it says, I want to understand it. It says that, like, the primary is twelve-foot minimum setback, twelve feet, and maximum is sixteen feet from the, from the curb. So what is it today?
Councilmember Garpetian, if you'll allow me to answer that question for you. What you were just referring to is the existing street setbacks along the primary, I believe. And if you don't mind referring to which, which page are you?
I'm at the four out of sixteen. This is the, when I keep all of my, my stops, this is the last presentation that I had.
So...
It says building design setbacks.
Correct. So the section that you are referring to with regards to primary street frontage would be a minimum setback of twelve feet and a maximum setback of sixteen feet would be for today's Brand Boulevard up until Lexington Avenue. So this is current code. What is being proposed would be actually in Chapter Four, and this would be on page, page thirteen and fourteen of the proposed DSP ordinance, which, as you mentioned, introduces a mixed-use commercial and a mixed-use residential street topology. Primary, primary street frontage would remain the same because that is essentially Brand Boulevard. We would not be introducing any changes to the Brand Boulevard streetscape. We would not be introducing any changes to the Brand Boulevard streetscape. Mixed-use commercial-
I'm sorry, I need to, to find that page.
Of course.
Is it part of today's presentation?
No, this was the presentation from January the 29th.
Okay, where is it again?
You do have that binder, and this would be on the fold-out pages that you have in Chapter 4, on pages 13 and 14 regarding building setbacks.
Four, okay, I have it here. I want to just compare the two. I got it. The, the proposed ones are in blue-
Correct.
-blue color, and the ones are kind of the greenish one, the, the current, okay.
Yes, and so the setbacks for the mixed-use commercial and mixed-use residential are increasing, and that is directly in regards to council's vision that we were told, you would like to see wider sidewalks, more street trees, more pedestrian-friendly orientation. So we took that into account and have created development standards for the mixed-use, mixed-use commercial and mixed-use residential streets, as indicated on the-
When you go to mixed-use commercial, for example, which is Central, you're having that five-foot parkway and 10-foot from their property line setback?
As was indicated in the, in the last council presentation, yes, they are, they will be providing a substantial sidewalk, and that would extend into the private property in terms of a, an access easement if required by the DSP.
In most cases, it's approximately three feet.
Correct.
And, and what we had shown in that last slide on the 29th was while we're removing that stories requirement, so that all that space that we would like to occupy there, that two or three feet that may go the full block and that open space, can then go inside that massing that still remains at the same scale allowed today.
No, I want, okay, the question is, that 10, 10-foot minimum is from the property line that they have today, because most of the developments are calculated from the curb, right? It says 12-foot setback, they calculated it from the curb and had a setback. Is this the same calculation, or it's that curb calculation has gone away, now it's from their property line they have to have 10-foot setback?
This is not in regards to the property line. We're actually addressing the street topology, and that would be a cumulative look at what would be essentially the streetscape, so it would be from the curb.
Got it, so the sidewalk, sidewalk is 10 feet.
Correct.
Correct.
And that three foot is the front landscaping that they used to call it common areas or what have you, that will be added to the sidewalk to make it a wider sidewalk, if we wanted to. So their setbacks are not changing that much. The way we dictate it is with wider sidewalks.
It, the sum of it is a couple feet beyond the property line that would need to be part of that setback in total. But yes, it's measured from the curb, not from the property line back.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Adrian?
Well, so it's not a question-
I think we have any more questions, no more questions for you. Thank you. Thanks for coming forward.
So, when this came up a couple weeks ago, I was very concerned with what I had seen in downtown Glendale as a proliferation of these studios and one-bedrooms, changing the, changing the fabric of Glendale and becoming less family-friendly, more, we can't use family, is that correct? Are there restrictions on that? I know there's certain buzzwords we can't walk into.
Well, I'll just say, we can't, designers is only regulations to benefit or, or be, impose additional burdens on families or discriminate based on-
Right, okay, so we have to be very careful nowadays. What I saw was a, a lack of diversity in the makeup of households in downtown Glendale, and I think it's very important for, for the health of a community to have that wide diversity of housing types, housing sizes, because I think it brings a lot to the, to the community. So I thought that perhaps a way to address this was through limiting density. My thought was that by limiting density, it would encourage the developers to provide that array of different housing choices. But after speaking with staff, they said, well, that's not necessarily so. I thought that if a developer had a maximum of 20 units that he could build on a parcel, that he would perhaps go for larger-sized units to maximize profit in the, in the sale of that unit or the rental of that unit. What staff has told me is, no, probably not, because those larger units need greater construction costs. So each, you know, whereas a three-bedroom unit has three bathrooms, three, you know, tubs, sinks, toilets and all that, a single unit would only have, have one. So they wouldn't necessarily gravitate towards providing that, that mix of units. So this proposal, recommendation, is something that I would, I see perhaps as the only vehicle by which we can get to that, to imposing that, that wide variety of housing sizes, in this case, it's housing sizes, in the city of Glendale. So it was a little counterintuitive for me, but I, I think I see how staff has been presenting it. So I would, you know, I would support the, this concept of setting forth, what do we call it, quotas, or recommended, or required housing types.
It would essentially be continuing with the DSP as proposed with the FAR limits.
With the, yeah, so, so keeping the FAR and not, not so much messing with the density, the density requirement.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Devine?
Well, I, I would certainly encourage more diverse housing mix in our community. I think the Scenario 3, the tiered system, is the, the way to go. As I see it, it's going to encourage good, I mean, there's nothing wrong about it. Encourages good design, ensures more open space, wider sidewalks, or, and I, I, you know, the, I'm a visual person, so slide number 18 was the, is, is the one that convinces me that this is the way to go in as far as density, and so I would go for, proceed with the FAR measurements and the, the tiered, the tiered system. Thank you for this report, Bradley, very nice, very nicely done.
Thank you. Mr. Adrian?
Just, moratorium comes to an end when? In April?
March 23rd.
March 23rd?
Yes.
And we're approving this on March 26th?
We're coming back to the city council on March 26th.
Thank you.
And you're, you're supportive of the-
Yes, I'm in support.
All right, thank you. Mr. Garpetian?
I have a little different take on this. I think if you don't have any density requirements, not much is going to change. So, but, what I would like to do is give incentive to this Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 that we have, we have different kinds of incentives to basically, hopefully get them to Tier 3, so they will build more. So I think what I want to suggest is, first of all, give incentive to developers who want to build a more diverse unit mix. So you tell them, you build more, I don't know, two bedrooms or three bedrooms, this is the incentive that instead of just a, a thousand square foot more open space, you get two stories, 20-foot tall, taller building, and 5,000 to 8,000 square foot of more, more square footage. Instead of that, I would, I would want to give incentives to developers who would build more diverse developments, and for the first tier, where this report indicated that 20%, 25% two bedrooms, maybe we need to increase that number instead of asking them, the first tier doesn't dictate anything. So if you have two acres of lot, which is almost 90,000 square feet, and you use SB-1818 with no density, you will have 90,000 square feet to build as many units as you can in there. So this doesn't dictate that 20% of that or 10% of that will be, will not be one bedrooms or singles. So this trend may continue, because they will still get two, two concessions without any public hearing, and two more concessions, maybe if I'm not right, if I'm not wrong, with staff level or concessions that council can give. So my thing is to have some sort of a, a limit on, on singles, even on the Tier 1, have 20 or 25% two bedrooms built in the Tier 1, and then from there on, increase that numbers to maybe 30 and 35% from Tier 2, to go 30% or 32% two bedrooms, Tier 3, go 35 to, I don't know, maybe 38% two bedrooms. And also give incentives to people who want to build a different, different unit mix, give them the density increase, give them the, the incentives that we have for only providing a thousand square foot more open space, because with Tier 1, and still have our development standards, the one that, you know, Bradley, this is a very comprehensive, and the entire team, this is a great report, and the design elements that we want from the, we demand from the developers, I think are great, but they, they can start from the Tier 1, and, and ask for this, this better standards, and have some two bedrooms built in the Tier 1, and move up from there.
Mr. Garpetian?
Yes.
If I can just address that, and I'm not sure that we explained it properly. And, and instead of incentives, think of community benefit. So you are asking for a larger unit, and you're saying, give them that incentive or, or require that community benefit from them to give them more development. That's exactly what the tier system is, is doing. And by putting the number of 10% maximum studios, and you've got to provide 25 or 30% depending on the tier, two and three bedrooms, we are saying, we'll give you some more density if you give us this community benefit, and we're equating that to a diverse, larger unit. Now, if you want to change those, those numbers, the concept, if you agree with the concept and you want to change the numbers, we can go back and look and see if, if it still makes economic sense, for instance, to say, at Tier 1, which is equivalent to our buy right, we'll see if you, if, if we can, if we can, if it still works for you to build a minimum 20% two-bedroom units. We'll go do that economically.
Let me, let me just, let me just address that. The Tier 1, if you are at, in Orange Central Zone or District, if you want to build, if you want to use SB-1818, your base is 100 units, so you can build 135 units, and because we're lowering some of these FARs in our new proposal, we're squeezing the square footage, but on the other hand, they can ask for more units, and what, what are we doing? We're squeezing all the units, and they're not going to build 110 units just to be a good guy. If they can build 130 units, they will build 130 units, and naturally, they're going to make it smaller units as well. What I'm saying is, can we, can we request or, or be part of our, our quote, the minimum size for a two-bedroom? Can, can we do that?
As part of the design standards, we did set a minimum square footage as part of any of these units that participate in that program. I believe it was 1,100 for a two-bedroom and 13 for a three. So we do have this.
Minimum, is that the minimum, 1,100?
Minimum square footage, yes.
But that's for two bedrooms, right?
For two.
It doesn't mean that there's a minimum number of two bedrooms that have to be built.
That's-
The tiered system does have that, though. That's what the tiered system proposes, that at Tier 2, Tier 3, there's a minimum percentage that you have to meet that requirement.
But he's, he's been bringing an example in Tier 1, where, so does, does, does Tier 1 allow for a developer to use SB-1818 to completely circumvent these requirements?
So we lowered our base density for some of those sites, I believe they started at 2.5, down to 2.0, so that we can create enough room to be able to get community benefit and the enhanced design. Now, we did not put in a minimum requirement at Tier 1, just because economically, it probably wouldn't work.
And we keep talking about this economic feasibility. Basically, if you build 100 units, there is a cost per unit, and what makes it, the difference that it makes in cost is your land value. So if you purchase a land that you can build 110, 100 units on it, the land value is different than a land that, same-sized land that you can only build 70 units on it. So the way they make sense out of it is, they, they negotiate in advance, the feasibility, economic feasibility is, is negotiated in advance, and that is on purchasing the land. Otherwise, the cost of construction is the same, every, the cost of their permits are the same, everything else stays almost the same. Yes, the size of units makes a difference, because if you build a 1,000-square-foot two-bedroom versus a 650-square-foot one-bedroom, of course, there's a, that's why they build more one-bedrooms, because they can charge two, $2,000 rent, instead of one, one, two-bedroom is $3,000. I, I, I don't want to really choke everything, but I want to make sure, I, I voted for a moratorium. It was, was not easy. This never happened in downtown Glendale. First time that this council took that big step. And I want to make sure we will have a product, end product will be the way that we can defend it, or we can, we can keep our heads up and say, look, we made a difference, downtown is different, has the, the vision that this council has today. So I don't know how, how put, how to redraft this thing or craft a new one, but I think from the Tier 1, it has to be the way that they know they have to provide a different unit mix. And based on that, you can give incentives to build more two-bedrooms or three-bedrooms for everybody. There are a lot of executives don't want to live in a 600-square-foot one-bedroom, they want to have a two-bedroom, make one as an office, you know, more open space or what have you. But I think the way it is, if you don't have any, if you don't want to have density limit, the way to dictate a different, different unit mix or diverse unit mix is size up the units, as well as, you know, requiring a certain percentage from Tier 1.
So we can test a higher percentage for Tier 2 and Tier 3, and then insert one for Tier 1 as well, and come back with some information, see if that, whenever we come back on the 5th, we can come back and show you how that does or doesn't work.
And I said, this is not easy, this is a, this is a great work in a short period of time, and I'm, I'm very impressed by this work, because it's really trying to address the concerns that we have and the concerns that the community members have. So, thank you. All of you, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Adrian?
Did you, I'm, excuse me, did you say minimum 1,100 square feet for two-bedroom?
For units that participate in the community benefit program, correct.
But that's fairly large two-bedroom, I mean-
And, and we're still testing, I mean-
You're saying minimum.
Correct. And, and that number may have to move a little bit, we're still testing some of these, but we did want to create, we wanted to create a unit size that would be amenable to a family with children, or a multi-generational household, something that was more than just, say, a roommate situation, but it did appear, appeal to a much broader portion of the population. So there was a little bit more room for the bedrooms living area.
I mean, in my opinion, 1,100 minimum, I'm not, minimum 1,100 for two-bedroom is large unit, and maybe we have to be more lenient about that. The second question I have, so if the developer uses SB-1818, can overcome all these rules and regulation, or?
Most likely.
There, there will be instances where that will happen, and there's not a lot that we can do to control that. What we've tried to set this up is that it will work for most cases, it'll also work on the sites where we're standing to gain the most community benefit, the most impact, and those would be some of the larger undeveloped sites along Central and Orange, but there may be some smaller sites that will achieve it without having to participate, but there's not a lot we can do to change that.
That's, that's exactly my point. I mean, for the Tier 1, if they do SB-1818, if there's a minimum of like 20% for two-bedrooms, even if they use SB-1818, they have to provide that 20% two-bedrooms. And 20% of the affordable housings should be two-bedrooms as well, so that, that will continue, basically.
And I would say the number of sites where that happens, where they would be able to achieve just three SB-1818 is, is few. It's not that many.
There are few properties that they can use SB-1818 to-
Correct. But they are, they are in the minority. They are, they are the exception and not the rule to most of the sites that are, have development potential remaining in them.
Because most of the time, developers, they come outside Glendale and they don't care what's going on in Glendale. They'll be here for a very short period of time, and they're not those people that they say, oh, I'm leaving Glendale, I have to follow the rules and regulation, they come here for money, and in few years, they disappear. So we have to have rules such that, I don't know what you have to do, I'm just saying that, just imagining that we put all these rules and regulation and easily they can bypass it, doesn't make sense. We have to review this issue again.
The design standards would still stay in place as well, largely it impacts the community benefit element.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you have more clear direction?
I believe so.
Okay, good. I think everyone's very happy with the report, and everyone understands we're making really good progress towards a joint vision that this council has. Just want to make sure that all this work doesn't become nullified by someone, you know, using, for example, SB-1818 to do what they want to do, which is cram as many units as possible within a limited amount of space. So if we can address that in Tier One, I think that'll solve that problem, right? Or at least partially solve the problem.
Great, we'll look into that and study it.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
I'll move the item. Second. Roll call, please.
There's no, yeah, you, you provided us with...
Well, actually, I want a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion.
No file and directing staff pursuant to the comments made by councilmembers.
Sounds good.
So that, that was, that's what was moved in the second...
As we understand, note and file, the direction is to go back and study a standard for Tier One.
All right, let's do this again. Who, who moved that?
I moved the item.
Second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agarjayan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinany? Yes, thank you. Thank you, Bradley. Next item?
Item three was moved from calendar, and the next item would be adjourned time.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We're adjourned at 4:40 PM.